Welcome to the Tuesday, July 15th Board of Alderman Meeting. We're going to go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Philling?
Here.
Alderman Kelly?
Here.
Alderman Cleave?
Here.
Alderman Madrigal? Alderman Stewart?
Here.
Alderman Hoven?
Here.
Alderman Lash?
Here.
Attorney Carr?
Here.
Chief Klinger?
Here.
Engineer Garondo?
Here.
Public Works Commissioner Burgman?
Here.
If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to invite Pastor Tim Reeves to the podium to offer this evening's prayer.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you tonight. I see new faces since the last time I've done this. Congratulations to everyone. I want to just thank you for allowing the Ministry Alliance to open these meetings in prayer. We, as a group, have just really enjoyed the opportunity to do this. We banned a couple of churches this year. We're continuing to grow. And every Tuesday morning, we pray over the community, over the first responders, over the mayor, the alderman, everyone, the school district. And we cover everything in prayer. So it truly is an honor to be here tonight. So let's pray, shall we? Father God, I just come before you in the mighty name of Jesus. Tonight, Lord, I thank you for this opportunity. And I thank you, Father, for this community. And I thank you for the mayor, the alderman, again, the first responders, Lord, the police officers, all of them, Lord, that just put their name, their title, and everything on the line to try to better this city, keep it safe, Lord. Tonight, Lord, I just felt impressed to really pray on the job openings that we have in this community. And Father, I just pray, Lord, that you would bring us the right candidates for the right job openings, Lord, that you would just fill every position, Lord, that you would give our leaders Solomon-type wisdom. Lord, just give them eyes to see, give them ears to hear. And I pray, Lord, that there would be a unity in this place, there would be a unity in this town, God, as we continue to strive to become better and not better, Lord. I thank you, Father, in Jesus' mighty name I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Do I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleave. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on June 30th, 2025?
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Alderman Cleave. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the special meeting on June 30th, 2025, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from closed session on July 1st, 2025?
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Alderman Cleave. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from closed session on July 1st, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Moving on?
Are the minutes from the last meeting going to be forthcoming?
They'll be at the next meeting.
Yes, at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right, for public participation, I do have one speaker card. So when I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I would like to call Ms. Gina Brayden.
Hi.
Hi.
It's Gina Brayden. I'm at 1316 Peachtree Lane, Pacific. I just came to give an update on our feral cat activities. I understand that our budget had to be cut. And so I think we're pretty disappointed in that. That's going to hamstring us a little bit. But I was here at the last budget meeting, and I understand that those are some things, like you guys have to make a lot of tough decisions. In the meantime, I thought I'd just give you a quick report. I didn't have my paperwork. My computer decided to update itself today, of all days. But anyway, roughly, we've probably done about 215 cats in total. About 144 of those were in-city limits. And we did about 61 or 62 adults. And believe it or not, we've done 163 kittens. So this year, we've had about a 73% of all the cats that we've done are kittens. And we're still in the midst of our kitten phase. So right now, at this very moment, we have 45 to 50 kittens that we're trying to get into some rescue or some shelter somewhere. There's probably at least another 30 to 40 that are sitting in Pacific that I cannot bring in anywhere. I can't treat them in the field. If they're not social, I can't really catch them, have time to socialize them. So that's a problem because they usually come in with upper respiratory problems or eye infections. So a lot of them are just sitting out there. Part of the problem is that, for some reason this year, we've had a huge explosion of kittens, even worse than last year. So whatever those reasons are, we're all kind of dealing with it right now. We're just doing the best that we can. I actually was going to come to you this year and ask for an extra $300 a month because we have at least 10 to 12 colonies that we've already done TNR on. We're right at about 99% of all of them. We might have one cat or two here and there that come in and out. We can't catch them as easily. We try to get all the females because they're the biggest problem and pull the kittens first. In those colonies, we have two that we know of in Pacific that I've recently identified one. She's allowing us to help her. There are at least 20 cats there. The other two will not let us help them. So they're just kind of sitting there. That's a good time for the city to have legislation that will allow us to give out citations for people that won't allow us to help because they're just perpetuating the problem. But since we don't really have that right now, that may be something to work for in the future. So pretty much, we've made a huge dent. I'm just hoping that we don't backtrack now without the budget. We'll do the best that we can. But the kittens are really the problem in the summer and the fall. We wanted to get more adults in the winter, but we had a really cold winter, and then went right into the heat. And it's really difficult to catch cats when it's 90, 103. The cats get sick. They can die. We can have heat stroke. So it's really hard on volunteers that are helping us. But, you know, we're going to just work our way through it. We still have August to go, too. And I don't usually do any trapping in August unless I have to. But we'll stick it out a little bit. As far as any issues, we did have one issue with a colony. One person was complaining, but we found out that she was basically complaining about everything to the neighbors. So James and I worked on a solution for that, a solution we had already put in place. We've been working on different solutions for about four months. But that particular colony is 99% done. We've been trying to catch the mom for two years, and she's really clever. We even considered hiring. So for right now with that colony, that's getting to be a big comping for me. So that's enabled me to get more done in the year. But we still have to feed these colonies so that they don't get sick again. We cannot let them starve. So I was going to ask for a little bit more money so that we can get food. I can get a 2,000-pound pallet of food for about $300 from East St. Louis with suppliers over there that work with Greater Good and some other organizations. Bring that in, supply all that food to our feral cat caretakers, in addition to some of the elderly and people that are on fixed incomes that we know of, so that we can help them out, too. That's pretty much about where we are. I think we hit our, let's see, we are at our 650 to 750 mark this month for the last three years. So it's a lot of cats to go through, lots of kittens. Okay? Any updates? And I'll be here for the rest of the meeting, too.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks. All right, moving on to new bills. Do I have a sponsor for Bill Number 5286?
I'll sponsor.
I have a sponsor from Alderman Hoven. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 5286?
An ordinance amending Section 4040 of the City Pacific Municipal Code by enacting a definition of food trucks and adding a new Chapter 402 to establish regulations for operation of food trucks on private property.
Is there any discussion?
I have some comments.
Okay.
Number one, I read what Ms. Wilson had put in the memo about this. Reading it, is the, are we just wanting food trucks at events? Is that really?
Have additional input?
No, the goal is not just at events. The goal is just to provide some framework of regulations for those that want to operate in town.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Does this impact the trucks that are currently in place? If it passes, does it go? Does it impact them? Or are they grandfathered in? More curious on that than anything.
If I might, because this was talked about last Tuesday, planning and zoning. There is nothing in there now that has a grandfather clause for the two. There are two, what was being termed as semi-permanent food trucks. And so this would apply to those.
Okay. And so that would be something for us to think about because they didn't have this one when they did what they did. The other is, we have in here specifically saying no alcohol can be sold from food trucks. And yet, can I assume that's an exclusion during events, during permanent events? Or because, I understand maybe on a normal day-to-day basis, that would be the case. But I know we have food trucks that are selling alcohol out of them during our events. And if we're trying to eliminate that, so be it. I just wanted to point it out and ask. It was Section 400.040. And it says, "No alcoholic beverages may be sold from a food truck."
Alderman Cleave, we discussed that in planning and zoning. And it was not our intent at festivals because that requires a separate liquor license, and those are typically not sold out of what the commission viewed as food trucks. They're more out of like trailers or things like that that people get special licenses for. So this was really just, you know, the food trucks that are going to operate on a daily basis would not have the ability to sell alcohol.
Okay. Can we make sure that that's what it says in writing, then?
Was that on page one or two?
I think it was page one. I just put it in my notes here. It's Section 1 and then Section 400.040. Definition of food trucks, very near the top on page one, I think. I can bring it up, but I just want to make sure that we're not, if our intent...
It's on the bill itself.
Yeah, it's definitely, that's what I'm reading from. For sure.
Well, there's also a lot of contradictions in it. It eliminates food trucks certain places, but then it'll say, well, it can be down at the city plaza down there by Brew House, but it can't be 150 feet near the door, but it's okay to be there at Pacific Plaza, which is right there by Brew House. And that wasn't an event. It was just normal. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be changed in this. I think that they're making it very hard for food trucks to come into Pacific. And I think people enjoy the food trucks that come in. I understand if, I guess I understand if they're by downtown Pacific for a day and the businesses down there don't like it. But I think they're just, it's just making it very hard. And I do have Union and Washington's restrictions on food trucks. I copied those off. And a lot of theirs are, they're close to it, but they can pay like $25, you know, for the event and come into town, or they can do $100 for a year if they think they're only going to be able to do one event that's $25. They have anywhere from 200 to 500 from a restaurant. I wish they would have made the map of where our area is that they didn't want food trucks to be because they have, you know, maps in there that you can see down on the riverfront and where is their food truck area. So that needs to be, the map needs to be made out. But the licensing and if a food truck wants to go in to try to be a permanent brick-and-mortar business, and they're giving them one year, and I understand it can be renewed, but if they're buying property and they've moved over and they're doing it and they're following all the rules and all the sanitations and all the health department stuff, then I don't see, you know, to put a restriction of one year to be able to do it. So I don't know. I just think it's making it very hard for businesses to come into Pacific. Because I'm hearing here lately that that's on a lot of cases that's been in the past. And I really don't want to continue it.
And I think I understand the premise of the, you've got a year to make a permanent location if you're doing that. I think one of the things that we need to make sure we think through, though, I know a lot of places that are actually making like food truck parks and the food trucks become permanent. And, but I'm not saying we should do that. I'm just, and I understand putting restrictions, controls around food trucks. I agree with it on a lot of fronts. I do think the fact that they've got the 150 feet of a brick-and-mortar protects the entire area that they tried, that's been tried to map out in this. I went through and I did make a map because I wanted to see exactly where it was.
Protects them from what?
Well, it protects a food truck from rolling up next to Brown Jerry's, and I'm not trying to single them out by any means. But it protects them from pulling in the road next to them and selling barbecue.
Well, and it says in here that they can't be on public property unless it's an event. They can be on private property. And the private property, that's another thing. They have to have a notarized note from the property owner.
But I didn't think, even on private property, I didn't think it could be within 150 feet of a brick-and-mortar.
That's the way I read it.
Yes.
Unless there's, unless it's part of a special event.
Correct, correct. So the map is fine that they've defined, but I don't think that would be a problem just based on 150 feet.
Yeah, that's what I think with 150 feet. And there, and like I said, these other towns, they have a distance on theirs, too. But I just, with all the permits and all the one-years, you know, I just think, I know if I didn't have enough money to build or get a brick-and-mortar building, but then I could buy property, well, then you've got that payment, you've got your business you're running, and then they're saying, okay, you've got a year to get your money together and make it a building.
Easy enough to get around. I mean, it's, you just put your truck on someone else's property or let the other person buy the property and then put your truck there. I mean, it's, everything has a way around it. But I hear what you're saying. The other thing is, it states in your city, "Staff may approve or deny such temporary use permit." Is that just saying it doesn't need to come to Board of Aldermen? Or is it saying that they have special powers of some kind? Probably asking our attorney that question more than anybody else.
I think the first question needs to be, there's reference to permits in here. And last time this was discussed at planning and zoning, they said these permits will have to be created. So the first question is, what is a temporary use permit? Do we currently have something like that? And if we have already created something, do we have a copy?
I mean, we don't have a temporary use permit specific to food trucks, but we do have, like, day, I guess you could potentially call it a temporary use permit or like a day permit, you know, or licensing and things like that. We do have those things in place dependent on what they're looking for.
So it sounds like that's what this is referring to in that instance. And there's about two other instances throughout here. It's talking about a conditional, I want to get it right because it's not the CUP, but it sounds very, the commercial use permit, that was another one that they said they'd have to create. Are they referencing, is there a commercial use permit or is this referencing the commercial occupancy permit?
Where, oh, the... It'd be a commercial use permit and a business license, so obtaining a permit for commercial use.
And shall obtain a commercial use permit under licensing?
Yes.
Is that a permit that we have?
I don't know that we have. Again, we may have them for commercial use elsewhere, but not specific to...
Food truck.
Food trucks.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We do have a food truck up here on Osage, and it does have a business license, and it does have an occupancy per the city in place now. So they could just follow the same guidelines we're already following. But I want to make sure the ones that are established don't get eliminated in the event of changing these policies and procedures. It'd be like the containers where we had containers in place, and now it's a whole different thing. And this food truck could turn into another one of those issues if we're not careful. That one is legal. It has a business license. It has occupancy. It has everything it's supposed to have, so.
Is that you're referring to, is that called the commercial occupancy permit?
Carla has my copy. I brought, I had Kim print it off today so we could show that there is one that exists. We can, we can...
I believe it's just an occupancy permit and a business license.
So it's just the language in here just needs to be cleaned up.
And with respect to the question about administrative approval, it looks like it sets up administrative approval. So would that have been, if it's shown that they're going to comply with every single section of the ordinance, staff can go ahead and administratively approve it. But if there's any kind of disagreement or if staff denies it and they disagree with the reason, then they can bring it to the full board.
Perfect.
Does that statement need to be added or just automatically is added?
It's under 402.050.
Well, they can always question us. Thank you.
And that the Board of Aldermen has the power to make the final decision on any disagreement with respect to interpretation or the administration under the ordinance.
Thank you.
Two other things. It says specifically that it, however, in no case shall a food truck operator be located within or upon, and one of the things is industrial parks. And I think that's a big thing for food trucks. They show up in industrial parks for lunchtime and things like that. So I'm not sure why we would stop that, but...
Well, it's already not allowed in there. I called and asked someone that I know that works down there. She knew why, that they weren't allowed in the industrial area. And she said, well, there's been down on different businesses on their parking lot. But she said the most it would be if it's on the street. It might be, you know, parking and stuff for the people coming to it. But other than that, if they get permission from a company...
That's what I was going to say. So if they pulled in one of the businesses and they had permission to the business, it would be acceptable even in industrial park? Because it's private property at that point? Is that? I'm just trying to make sure. I just, you know, we, in my business, we bring food trucks in all the time. And it's, we consider it a benefit to employees, honestly. And it, I would hate to see us eliminate that. But if industrial parks around here don't want it, so be it. I don't want to push a bad position either, so.
Where was that?
That was under Location and Extent B.
Oh, there it is. Okay. I'm looking all over for it.
Yes.
Found it. Thank you.
So I understand in residential areas and things like that, no problem. City parks without a special permit, I get all that. But I was surprised that industrial parks was listed.
So here's what I'm going to ask for those, because there's lots of discussion on some changes that potentially may need to be readdressed and looked at. If those that have questions, because I don't think we can go through them tonight and point them all out. But if you have items that you would like to see changed, if you will email those over, go ahead and email them to Ms. Wilson and at least copy myself and Attorney Carr and City Clerk Barfield. And so then collectively, we can, you know, get all those, get a new copy for the next board meeting with, you know, highlighted or redlined of the changes. And then we can kind of discuss those and yea or nay. And if we need to amend the bill, then with some of those changes, we can.
Okay.
I think that'd probably be the best because there's lots of different...
One other thing related, but unrelated, I noticed that the public hearing notice had said, "Call the zoning officer by telephone," which is fine. I don't have a problem with the verbal. But the email was Mr. Garondo's email address. And I think that should go to Ms. Wilson, and then she can forward them. So it comes through City Mail and Sunshine Law Stuff. And that was in, that was the public hearing notice. It wasn't in the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
It was the public hearing notice for this at the bottom. It says, "If you have questions, call this phone number or email." And it was Mr. Garondo's work email address, but it should come to the city.
I think we, okay, at least, you probably should at least add Ms. Wilson to it.
That's fine. I mean, however you want to do it, but a copy should be coming to...
Yes.
City Mail. That was all I had on that.
Okay. All right. Perfect.
I was just going to make some general comments on it. Because I do agree with you, it is quite lengthy. I've got every page marked up on here. One of the things that goes to, again, I think Ms. Stewart was hitting on it, there's an excessive amount of permits that are required for this to happen. Somebody that comes in and they're maybe at different locations, they're paying $100 every three months. That would be 400 a year. And again, they're having to come back every three months. I don't know how often food trucks come to various, you know, move around in the location. I have noticed them in a couple of businesses. But I just think the number of permits that they're having to apply for, the other one that was saying if it's on private property, you have to have a notarized statement from them. Again, that's another hoop for them to jump through. Presumably, if they're on someone's private property, if they don't have permission, the private landowner is going to be telling them that much. So I don't know what the point was of the notarized permission. And then the other one, the other main comment about it is, is some people have these at their houses when they have events like graduations and other things like that, weddings, I don't know, whatever. But I know it's not frequently, but it does happen. And again, I think if people want to have these on their private land, they have room for them. I don't know why we'd be restricting them. It says that right at the top of it, says, "The intent of this ordinance is to protect the private, the landowner's rights." It's actually restricting it, in my opinion. So I think they should be allowed in industrial. They should be allowed in residential if they can have them on their property. They're not in the right of way. They're not affecting anything. There's also some areas in our downtown district that are grassy areas. One of them was just mentioned where it gives the exemption is the train station. I don't understand exactly what the harm is of a food truck pulling in, you know, for a day to operate for whatever it is, a little event or a special thing to pull in on the grass. So again, if this was a more permanent situation, we could understand that. We have ordinances about parking vehicles and other things on grass and the weeds growing up. But if the scope of this is food trucks, the presumption is they're not there for, you know, beyond a day or two. And then again, that one section with regard to the more permanent ones, I think it was pointed out in the beginning, some of this language in there has got to be cleaned up so it's really clear what we're talking about, what the situation. Another example is that, is that description of trying to draw out the box of where they're prohibited. The way I read it, it was basically two streets. I don't know if they're trying to draw an area. That's what it said in the language. So again, this is just going back to the language that makes a lot of this confusing. Needs to be cleaned up. That's all.
All right.
Sorry.
All right.
Excuse me.
Moving on to consideration of bills previously introduced. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 5283?
An ordinance amending the regulations and standards for fences in the City Pacific.
Do I have a motion to approve Bill Number 5283?
I would make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleave. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Hoven. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Cleave?
Yes.
Alderman Stewart?
Yes.
Alderman Hoven?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the ayes have it, and Bill Number 5283 will become Ordinance 3454. Again, Bill Number 5283 becomes Ordinance 3454. Madam Clerk, would you please read amended Bill Number 5284?[1671.58]
An ordinance vacating Franklin Street between Fifth Street and a 20-foot wide alley dividing Zitsman Edition.
All right. And in the actual amended bill, it says, and then it continues on with and, to the 20-foot wide alley dividing Zitsman Edition and intersecting with Franklin Street. I noticed that rest was not on the, oh, maybe it was. I just read it further. Never mind. Anyway, do I have a motion to approve amended Bill Number 5284? Motion. I have a motion from Alderman Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Alderman Cleve. Is there any discussion? All the, oh, sorry, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
Alderman Stewart?
Yes.
Alderman Hoven?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the ayes have it, and Bill Number 5284 becomes Ordinance 3455. Again, Bill Number 5284 becomes Ordinance 3455. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 5285?
An ordinance approving a zoning change map amendment from C1 Downtown Commercial to M2 Heavy Industrial for the parcel located 819 East Osage and described as St. Louis County Parcel ID 30Y110056.
Do I have a motion to approve Bill Number 5285?
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Alderman Cleve. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Stewart?
Yes.
Alderman Hoven?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the ayes have it, and Bill 5285 becomes Ordinance 3456. Again, Bill 5285 becomes Ordinance 3456. Moving on to the mayor's report. So I would like to ask for a motion for us, the city, to go ahead and apply for the Route 66 Centennial sponsorship. This is the same sponsorship that we applied for, for last year, for the barbecue, Blue Grass and Barbecue Festival. This is just applying for it in hopes that we are selected again, and then obviously if we are, then it would come to the board.
I would make a motion that we apply for that.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Alderman Hoven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of applying for the Route 66 Centennial sponsorship, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Just a couple other things real quick. I was contacted by Mr. Pinkleton in regards to placement of a shed at Adams Garden. They had come to previous administration before, several years ago, and were inquiring about doing it. And it was advised they, they could, as long as they had the proper permits and all of that. However, at that time, they had hoped to do it, but they did not get to it. So they have now gotten to the point where they would like to build an eight-by-eight shed kind of behind the boulder, very nice one, be able, to be able to store their podium and the other things that they use for their bricklaying ceremonies. They will work with a professional company. It would be constructed on-site. That company will come to get the proper permits and all of that. So there's no cost to the city for this. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. We don't have any of those permits yet. But, you know, if everything is, comes in, the permits, they meet code, then obviously staff would be able to approve administratively. However, because if it, if they do not, and with it being in a city park, then it would come to the board for approval. So this is just an FYI.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
If that is going to be a city shed, why would we not waive the fees? It's going to end up belonging to the city.
We could potentially do that, so when they allow the permit, we can ask that to be brought forward.
Part two, what type of money do they need for the shed?
Pardon me?
What type of money do they need for the shed?
He did not specify.
If it's going to be city-funded or?
Yeah, no, they're going to fund it themselves. Yes. So he just said he'd gotten some quotes since time had passed since the last.
I believe if our attorney can turn that property over to us, since it's on our property, I would say we should waive the fees.
Okay. Well, when they get the permits.
We do that closer.
Then I'll reach out to Mr. Pinkleton and let him know when they get to the point of submitting permits to request, if they so choose, for those fees to be waived, and then it would come to the board for approval.
And the property would belong to the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the other thing I wanted to let you guys know that we received from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, actually from the Office of Dental Health, a certificate for our water system. We were awarded a 2024 Water Fluoridation Award from the Association of State and Territorial Dental Directors and the American Dental Association. There are currently 76.8% of residents are receiving Florida, in the state of Missouri, fluoridated water benefits from community water supplies. They say this is an effective and inexpensive method for preventing tooth decay. And so they just wanted to recognize us for what we do with our water system. We've got a nice little gift, a nice little certificate here. So I wanted to read that for you guys. And that is all I have. So we will go move on to unfinished business. Do I have a motion to untable Bill Number 5277?
I wanted to, but I'd prefer it to be in the packet again.
That's fine.
So we could see it.
Okay. We will add it to the next packet. All right, moving on to new business. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 2025-17?
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract for construction or improving for the First Street and Osage intersection with lampkeep trenching and excavating.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-17?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Lash. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-17, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 2025-18?
A resolution authorizing a withdrawal of $234,713 from the Contingency Reserve Fund of the City of Pacific to be transferred to the Parks Fund for operation.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-18?
I would make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Hoven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-18, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Any abstain? All right, with a vote of two to three, the nays have it, and resolution does not pass. I will make note that there will need to be an amendment to the budget brought forward at the next board meeting for where this money is going to come from. So I will leave it up to you all to determine that, because I could not find the 235 elsewhere without severely impacting, basically having no improvements done to our parks whatsoever in the next fiscal year. So I will lean on the aldermen for that, so we can get it in the packet for the next meeting.
Might I suggest that, since we don't even have the final numbers yet on June 30th, that we wait until we have those, which would be sometime in later August?
The problem is, we need funds potentially to operate our parks, because that was operating budget. So we would have to look at what numbers we have. I mean, we can review it and see.
We have a cash account balance in the parks and storms that I'm sure is sufficient to carry us through for eight weeks. In eight weeks, we'll have more definitive numbers, and we'll be in a better place to come up with some changes for a budget. I mean, if we try to do this in a week, it's just going to be a similar situation that we're dealing with right here today.
If you all wish to push it off till then, that's your choice. I just know that the budget was reviewed for probably two months beforehand, so.
I'd like to know from the city attorney what the legality of it is, because without that transfer, or without this being figured out, I assume that means we don't have a balanced budget. But I don't know that.
In your revenue column, if you had that transfer from your contingency fund in your revenue column, and that's what you use to balance your expenses, then that's correct. You don't have a balanced budget. What you've done is, you have made the decision to go ahead and take that revenue out of the revenue column. And so, under the statute, there's no specific time for you to amend the budget, but, and so your budget is still valid, it can still, you know, move you forward, but you want to do it sooner rather than later. And not that eight weeks is, is.
But it doesn't mean we have to do it within two weeks.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
Yep.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 2025-19?
A resolution authorizing a withdrawal of $120,286 from the Contingency Reserve Fund of the City of Pacific to be transferred to the Parks for the Storm, for the Scape Park project.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-19?
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Stewart. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Cleve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-19, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 2025-20?
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract for TNR services with Pacific TNR.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-20?
I'd make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Hoven. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick comment on it. We've got a contract starting August 1st.
Correct.
Which doesn't give us 12 months, so the amount per month is incorrect. Just FYI.
Yeah, this, it took us the exact same contract as we had last year. It was in August through.
And we did it wrong last year.
July. Pardon me?
Then we did it wrong last year.
You are correct.
But it should be $818.18 a month. And then the 11th month, it'll be eight, 18, and 20 cents. To carry it over 11 months.
Okay.
Honestly, I think that can be figured out pretty easily.
Yeah.
I just, it's an 11-month contract, not an annual, or not a yearly.
So we just need to make note of that. Number six, A. Okay. All right. So then, Alderman Cleve, do you still make your motion? Well, I guess the resolution's what we're approving, so we don't necessarily need to amend the resolution.
Right.
All right, no, I'm still fine. I'm just pointing out that.
Yep. I was just making sure we didn't need to, okay. All right, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-20, with the monthly dollar amount changed in the contract itself, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 2025-21?
Resolution authorizing execution of a contract agreement by and between the City of Pacific and the Pacific Partnership pertaining to a public-private effort to revitalize the city's central business district and downtown core area.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-21?
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Stewart. Is there any discussion?
Real quick, I love having all these things. One thing that I read in, in the agreement with the partnership, which I hadn't, I hadn't noticed in the past, but I think it's something, if, if we are giving the amount of money that we are, the language right now, and I'm not suggesting we change it this year, just in the future. We've got language that talks about up to $8,000 in facade grants. And I think it should be 8,000. I think they should do one facade grant per quarter. Because I think that makes the city look better, and I just think it's something that in the future, we need to.
I was under the impression that we didn't, we took that out last year, because we didn't want the city money being interpreted as going to facade grants.
No, they just had to keep it separated. My memory, I'm not going to go memory for memory with you, but I'm 90% sure it was in there last year. But we did talk about that the, that the money couldn't go to facade grants.
Right.
And I know that, but I'm saying.
Why, why do we have the language in the contract? Is it needed?
Because it's something that the partnership does. Doesn't mean that the funds from the city are going towards that.
Yeah, the language in there is just saying this is something they do.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
And I'm just saying the fact that we're contributing 32,000, I think they can take 8,000 of their, the other money, and do facade grants.
Well, I may, I may be wrong about it, but say, Smith's Grocery Store applies for a facade grant for $1,800. Well, then, because they're having this work done, they show it, and so then they give them $1,800 to this person. So it may not equal 8,000.
So that's why you think it's up to?
It's just that the places that, you know, that apply, and they pick from who has applied, and they already have the, you know, the cost and what it will cost to do. And that's why it says up to 8,000. So they may have $200 left over from that quarter or whatever, but.
They may have five.
All good if that's it. I guess what I'd like to see is one a quarter, or something like that. More than the cost even.
Yeah, in this case, they may have four facade grants in one quarter for a total of $8,000. And the next quarter, you know, they may have, or within, sorry.
That's okay. I know what you're saying. It's fine. I know what you meant.
Perfect. Okay.
Like I said, I wasn't suggesting any changes this year.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-21, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Moving on to the chief's report. Chief Kligler.
Thank you.
People have been waiting patiently.
I don't, I don't really have a report. I do have a couple of presentations that we'd like to make this evening. So earlier this year, I was approached by staff with the suggestion that the Police Department do a community service. So that award was created. We decided, tried to decide for a name for it, and again, we kind of took a vote, and decided to name it after retired police chief Matt McAnville. So we've asked him to be here for his initial presentation. So back in June, remember, we had a major heat wave in town? Director Shulman coordinated a series of cooling centers for the city. With the mayor's permission and encouragement, we opened up City Hall as one of those cooling centers. We were looking for, you know, people or organizations to staff that cooling center. So with very short notice, we put out a call to a couple of different civic groups here in town. With very short notice, and with a bunch of serious commitments for their members, the City Knights of Columbus stepped up and agreed to staff the facility for those two days. So I'd like to represent some of the Knights of Columbus to step forward quickly. So, Director Shulman. So in recognition for your service to the community, the Pacific Police Department and the City of Pacific, takes great pride in presenting you with the initial Matt McAnville Community Service. All right. And for number two, Officer Grebner. Press second, please. All right. Officer Grebner, ladies and gentlemen, on May 21st, 2025, approximately 11:00 p.m., Officer Grebner responded to the Pacific Mobile on the Run for possible overdose. On his arrival, he located a female victim who was not breathing and had no pulse. Officer Grebner administered dosis narkin, began CPR. As a result of his actions, that victim began breathing on her own. The victim was turned over to medics, the Mary McAmbulance District, for further care, and actually left the scene on her own power. So, Officer Grebner, your actions reflect a high standard of misconduct, the law enforcement provision, and bring credit to the City of Pacific and the Pacific Police Department. On the recommendation of your fellow officers, you are hereby awarded the Police Life Statement Award.
Congratulations.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. And congratulations to the Knights of Columbus as well. Thank you for stepping up in a time of need. All right, moving on, Public Works Commissioner report. Mr. Bergman.
Well, that's hard to follow.
Isn't that right?
I'm not sure if it's going to take a resolution or just a, maybe a motion, but we need to release the escrow, requesting to release the escrow money to McBride for the Mayor's of Brush Creek improvements. I'm not sure, maybe the attorney can help me with that. Does that need to be just a motion, or does that need to be like a resolution?
I think it should be a resolution, so we could bring that forth to, at the next meeting.
So, does somebody need to make a motion to have you do that?
Yeah, we.
Attorney Carr.
Can, can do that with.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
So just bringing it forward, but I guess that'd be on the next agenda?
Yes, August 5th.
And then I'm also requesting a ordinance to accept the streets and utilities for the Mayor's of Brush Creek as well.
All right, so we'll have that for first reading.
And then just a couple informational items. So you guys just passed the Resolution 2025-17 for the first no-stage intersection, so the plan is to, due to notice of proceed, February 15th, and then the completion date of May 15th, that's all tentative, but that's the idea, is to try to get that started in February and have it wrapped up by May. And then the Union Street project, which you guys are aware, goes from Sankar to Neocho, so it's right out a mile long, you know, pretty large project. That's all submitted to MoDOT. I reviewed it, got with Cochran, we made some updates, and now he's going to submit that to MoDOT. So once the MoDOT gives us their sign of approval, then we hope to bid that this fall, and then hopefully they can kind of get started on the water main and some of the storm work this winter, and then spring they can get started on the construction of the curbs and sidewalks and overlay. And that's, we're looking at probably like a six-month project for that. And that's all everyone has.
All right. Thank you very much. City Attorney, Attorney Carr.
No report this evening.
All right. Operations Committee.
We have not had a meeting, and we don't have anything currently scheduled.
All right. Administrative Committee.
Well, we haven't met, but I do have some items to talk about. I emailed, I sent an email to the Alderman from our recruiting service, SGR, and we have a total of 30 applicants for City Administrator, seven of which were highly qualified, and then there are others that meet a lot of the requirements, but not all of them. And SGR sent us a list of next steps, and for us to make these steps, we are going to have to change the way we've been doing this. So first one, he has set up a meeting for next week, which next week's a bad week because our city clerk's out three days and the mayor's out two days, but, so it'd probably be the following week from that, but to go over applicants and select semifinalists. So what I would like to do, and I would like Alderman approval to do it, I would like to get the information on each of the candidates and email that information out to Alderman or put it on a shared folder where people can get to it, so we can all look at it and be ready, and then set up a meeting week after next to go through the applicants and come up with our semifinalists. After that, we would send the semifinalist questionnaire and video interview questions that, like we've done with the other applicants. And then, I won't read all the other things that ask, but another one, after we get those back, the questionnaires and video interview questions, then we review everyone again and then select the finalists, and hopefully we have it narrowed down to three to five people at that point. And then we do background checks, references, all that kind of stuff, and then schedule onsite interviews. So I guess the first thing is I would like to get approval from the rest of the Aldermen that we can either set up a shared folder or just email the information out on these candidates, so that we can all go through them, and then we will meet to discuss them and figure out which ones we would like to proceed with and have questions and video questions. So I guess with that, I probably need to make a motion for that, and then we can vote and decide if that's what we want to do. I'd make a motion that we get the, that Ms. Barfield gets the information from SGR, and then she can email it out to all the Aldermen to have the information, we can review the information, and then we'll schedule a special meeting the following week to discuss as a board.
And you're just talking about the seven qualified, or the seven and the ones that are semi?
We would, it would be all of them.
All of them?
Yeah. And then, as a board, we'll whittle it down to what we consider the semifinalists.
Okay. Alderman, when you say all of them, you mean all 30?
No. The, there, of the 30, there are some that are completely unqualified, so just the, just this, I don't have the email in front of me right now, but it was seven, and then there was another number. Maybe it was another eight or something that didn't meet all the requirements, but were worth looking at.
Okay. All right.
So those two numbers.
All right. So I have a motion by Alderman Cleve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Hoven. Is there any more discussion?
Then this is all still covered under personnel, which would be closed material?
Correct.
That's it.
And the special meeting would be a closed session meeting?
Yes. All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of having City Clerk Barfield obtain the qualified and the semi-qualified, but worth looking at, application candidates for the City Administrator position from SGR and communicate it to the board for review prior to calling a special meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
And with that, we have a scheduled admin committee meeting on the 28th at 5:00 p.m., and I'm hoping to be able to use that time for the special meeting, but I'll have to ask everybody for their availability.
All righty.
And that is it for that report.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Planning and zoning committee, or commission?
They met last Tuesday. They had two items. One was the food truck ordinance, and they have note there to mention is that some of the members that were there that approved it weren't there at the first hearing on it, and some of the members that were at the first one obviously then weren't at this one. So you kind of had two different groups on that, and I think that led to some of the conflicts we're seeing in there now, it just didn't have a chance to get cleaned up. The other, the other topic they had on there was a discussion, a city staff presented material on RV campgrounds, and they're going to come back at their next meeting and have some more discussion on RV campgrounds. That is all.
All right. Park Board Report.
Park Board met last night. First thing I'll address is that they are now, another member resigned, she's moving out of town, and so they're now down three members, so it's a seven-member committee that has four members. If they have anyone that can't attend, they will not meet formally, won't be able to meet. So if you know anyone, or you are someone who would love to be on the Park Board, please reach out. We are in desperate need of Park Board members. Franklin County Girl Soccer attended the meeting and did a brief presentation that I gave a sheet to everyone with the horrible map. That was, unfortunately, it was a copy of a copy. It looked better last night when they showed it to us. They would like to do basically a community service project that, that is a kick wall at Liberty Field, and a kick wall is, this particular one that they're proposing is 12 feet tall, 32 feet wide. It would be painted with Pacific Purple. It would hopefully have the silhouette of a soccer player on it, and what that wall is designed is to allow someone to kick their soccer ball into the wall, so it is a, they don't need a team or anything, they don't need someone to retrieve the ball, they can sit there and practice kicking. They gave us a map, which you guys have. There is an A, B, C, and D. You won't be able to see the D on your map, and it's, it was a bad idea, so they're not worried about that. But they have an A location, they want a B location, which was, Park Board said, no, we don't want to put it there, it's wet all the time, that kind of stuff. So it'd either be the A location on the east side of Liberty Field, or the C location on the west side of Liberty. And the materials are donated, and the time is donated, everything doesn't, there's no charge of the city. Yes, it would be Liberty Field, we would have to maintain it in the future by painting it when it needs to be painted, cutting grass around it, things like that. It would be six inches above the ground to make it easy to trim and take care of without having to do crazy work to keep it, keep the grass cut around it. And I think one of the biggest things I wanted to bring it up for is Hackman Lumber is donating the materials, and they would like a Hackman Lumber sign to be in the upper corner of it or something like that, and that was really one of the bigger things that I wasn't sure that we allow.
Hi, can I ask a question? You might have to get a no-rise certificate for that as well, being in a floodplain.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We discussed that earlier. Thank you, Robert.
And I would also, and we can, you know, have Attorney Carr look into the donating sign, but I would, I would think it could potentially be done, because if you think about a park bench, when it's in the memory of somebody, we, there's a plaque on there saying that, so I don't, I don't know why...
Just because it's a business, I didn't know.
Yeah, but if they've donated materials to build it, I would...
I think it's a good idea. I think more places want to donate stuff, great.
Yeah, I think the no-rise certificate is probably the number one issue that would have to be addressed. As far as your locations of A and C, my concern with A is we do have other entities that rent that field, and would that wall interfere with those other entities and the, what they do there? Where C is kind of closer to the walk path by the entrance, really there's nothing else that's done in that area.
Right. And that was where they were, they were leaning to. When I say they, it was with Mr. Fowler and Park Board, and the Park Board is okay with doing this, so...
I would say that would probably be the first preference, but I think, again, the bigger issue is looking into is a no-rise certificate needed before we can move forward one way or another with this.
And how do we, who do we talk to about that?
For the planning manager?
Right.
Right now, we're going to talk to Mr. Gerondo about it until our building commissioner starts, which will be in mid-August, by the way.
Mr. Fowler knows about it. I'll reach out to Mr. Fowler and ask him to get with you on it and figure out what to do there, and whatever other feedback any other board member has.
We could floor that thing, as well, so I can make sure the details, like, you do that. Or maybe something like that.
Will do.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Two things. The first concern is the location, because of the sign that's already there. If it's the main entrance, we have the big sign that says Liberty Field. I don't want it to be too congested or take away from the walking path. And then, second of all, has specific soccer association been involved now that we have leased that property to them?
They did talk to them. They did talk to...
So we may need to get a statement from them, just to cover, so they can't come back later and change the line. But I don't want it to overcloud that entrance sign as well.
Yes. Yeah, that would...
Okay, thank you.
And that's fine, and I can get them to make sure that we have some from PSA. Neither location is PSA leased property. It's close, but it's not.
Okay. Yeah, because that's not actually on the field that PSA is leasing.
That's why I'm afraid it might be too close to the sign, so that's why...
We have probably a little bit better of a map, maybe with especially location C...
I'll drive over as well.
Kind of diagrammed out, because even from this map, it shows the line, but it doesn't show how close to that sign.
Yeah, and the C location looks like it is at the end of the smaller soccer field, I don't even remember, the kiddie soccer field, or whatever it is they call it.
Okay.
The other end of entrance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There shouldn't be any problem with having a business, because all those veteran signs, a lot of them have a...
A business, yeah.
Sponsored by, you know, the businesses.
This is the main entrance, this is the back where it goes between them.
All right. Anything else from Park Board?
Yes, actually. Plenty, sorry. Talking over here. I went through the budget with them, and I told them that based on what would happen with contingency, things may change, so they're very aware of that. They discussed Liberty Field signage and getting better signage at the entrances, and that's something that we'd have to look at in the FY '27 budget at this point, because it wouldn't be a cheap endeavor. They discussed fishing regulations for the pond at Liberty Field and Hawthorne when it gets done, which is going to be a question for Mr. Bergman and my report. And then Mr. Fowler's going to reach out to Missouri Conservation and look for recommendations of what kind of fishing regulations, and it's like catch and release, and don't eat the fish, and whatever else, so... Let's see, what else? Oh, one of the, one of the bigger things that's an impact, there has been a lot of vandalism in City Park, and it seems to be getting worse and worse. So Mr. Fowler asked if we could have City Park and Liberty Field Park close at 10:00 p.m. instead of the existing midnight.
That will require a change to the ordinance, so...
Yes, it would.
We could have Attorney Carr draft...
I want to see what, what the temperature is first on that. They're very aware of it. Park Board made a motion to send it to the board. They believe it should be 10 o'clock, and while we know that, you know, the police officers are not going to be sitting there at 10 o'clock closing the park or anything, if they drive by at 11 o'clock and someone's in the park, at least they could go in there and say, okay, what are you doing? Got to leave.
I do know this topic has come up before, especially with the City Park, and I know there was some conversation around, like, the tennis courts, which are lighted. People, especially on a summer night, might want to be there after 10 o'clock, because it's cooler, playing, you know. Is that something that could potentially come up in conversations with that? Because I know it has in the past, but...
I understand, but...
All things to think about.
All this damage is occurring, and it's, yeah.
Do they, do we have some indication of what time it's been done?
Not that I'm aware of.
Actually, some of our, a couple of our investigations, some of the damage is being done, it's been done during the daytime, during really daytime hours. And my guys do hit those parks pretty heavy after midnight, so most of the damage is actually being done during business, regular business, their current business hours.
There was, I was down there the other day, and there was like a group of ten teenagers that went over in the farthest restroom, farthest, you know, where this pavilion is, and they were in there for a long time as a group. Don't know what they were doing, but then they finally came out, but...
Yeah, the restrooms are taking the major beating, and it's ridiculous. If anybody's hearing it and you're, somebody's doing it, grow up. My God.
My thing would be just that. I mean, if we don't know that there's vandalism's occurring at specific hours, I don't know what...
He leaves, he leaves in the evening and comes back the next morning and it's done, is what he said. Mr. Fowler, I'm speaking of. So I understand what Chief's saying, and I absolutely believe him, but Mr. Fowler says that they're fine, and then when he gets there the next morning, they're not.
But he's leaving at 5:00 p.m., not at 10.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. I, I...
I'm just trying to get clout.
No, I know, I understand, I understand. I can't answer the question. I can't tell you what's happening after 10:00 p.m. He's trying to figure out something to do.
Yeah. Yeah, and he usually lives at 3:30 during summer hours and probably, 2:30, summer hours, and then 3:30 regular, so...
Mayor, if I may, are cameras not picking up?
So the problem, the problem we're having, the cameras don't cover the inside of the bathrooms.
It's right, you're doing it, okay.
Now, we have, on some of the exterior damage, we have picked those up on camera. We've filed charges on some people with that. One of the things I'm looking at with my staff is some of the placement, some of the cameras, because we don't have, one of the things, one of the places we're lacking with them, and I'm not sure what a good solution is, is people actually, like, if you look at the cameras at Liberty Field, we've got a good visual of people coming in and out of the restrooms. So if we can kind of narrow the time down, it really helps. So we'd like to, but some of the ones in the City Park, we don't, you can see a shape going into the bathroom, but that's all, there's no way to identify anybody. So we're looking at the next, I mean, that's, this is several steps down the line with the camera systems, but eventually getting improved cameras, not to interfere with anybody's privacy, but a better facial recognition coming in and out of those bathrooms. But that's, that camera project's ongoing, so that's going to be a bit. But I mean, it is something that we're aware of, and my comm staff monitor those cameras every night, so we do pick up on activity. My dispatcher send officers if they see vehicles in the park or people in the park after dark, or after the business hours. We do send officers in there to check them, and I guarantee my guys are checking those parks, you know, at least a couple of times throughout the shift, minimum. So we are checking them, but that's where a lot, I'm saying, that's where a lot of the damage is coming in. The last major deal with the bathrooms happened like in the afternoon, where they got in there and let someone fire in there.
As I say, Mr. Bergman, aren't the bathrooms at City Park also on like a lock system, or is it just Liberty Field?
The City Park, they're not.
They're not? Okay. I couldn't remember.
Liberty Field, they lock themselves at midnight.
Right.
The City Park, they do not, and I, obviously, I don't know about the one at Jensen's Point.
And he actually said Jensen seems to be okay, for whatever reason. Must be harder to get to.
Well, but that, Jensen's Point, it closes at sundown. And if my guys see cars on the lot after sundown, they stop, they can't get into it.
He said that one's not really been an issue.
So that could potentially be something to look into, too, is the locking mechanisms on the bathroom at City Park like we have at Liberty Field?
Well, the City Park is, unfortunately, it wouldn't be all just cars coming in, because there's so many entrances for kids to walk in. I'm assuming it's kids, I just can't see adults driving in and doing it, but...
You hope not.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
So I'm hearing basically that the Board of Aldermen doesn't think doing this right now at 10:00 p.m. is something that should be pursued, so we don't need to ask the City Attorney to do anything. And find out more information, details of, if we can narrow down when this really happens. And find out more information, details of, if we can narrow down when it's really happening. Let's see, last thing is, there's a need for a vacuum, robotic vacuum at the pool. And it's something that Mr. Fowler has gotten bids on already and he's going to go through the normal PO process, so just FYI. Next meeting is August 11th at 7:00 PM.
All right. Tourism Commission report. Alderman Madrigal is not here to give that this evening, so we'll go Mayor McValley, Historical Society report.
We did have a meeting. We do meet tomorrow.
Jeffrey White, Memorial Skate Park Project Committee report.
No meeting is held, no meeting scheduled.
All right. Miscellaneous, do I have a motion to approve the list of bills?
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Alderman Cleave. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the list of bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the special event application for Pacific Area Chamber of Commerce for the Witches and Warlocks Adult Street Party on Friday, October 17th from 3:30 PM to midnight?
I would make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Hoven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the special event application for the Chamber of Commerce, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the special event application for Pacific Area Chamber of Commerce for dinner on St. Louis Street on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM?
I would make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleave. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Hoven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the special event application for Pacific Area Chamber of Commerce for dinner on St. Louis Street, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Moving on to reports of the city officials. Alderman Stewart?
I'm not real sure. All the, of all the ins and outs, I've seen on Facebook where we've had some ribbon cuttings for different new businesses in Pacific. I do know the one gentleman, he's moved from another location down to the Ward 1 location for a antique mall. I visited it today. So there's businesses coming in. And also, they're going to be starting, I saw the, the groundbreaking on the new business out at the Pacific Logistics Park in the morning. And I guess that's it.
Yep. All right. Alderman Hoven?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Alderman Lush?
I was going to say, I've been taking a look at the parks. One of the things I just wanted to point out was there, there's a lot of people that are using the parks this summer. Everybody's getting out, getting active. They're using the tennis courts, they're using the ball fields, they're using the swimming pool, the pavilions, all nine yards. So that's, that's mainly at the community park. I just thought that was a nice thing to see, let everybody know that they are well-used.
All right. Alderman Kelly?
Two things. First of all, we did have a name to be nominated tonight for the Tourism Board. However, since the board liaison is not here, I think we'll hold off till the next board meeting since the representative from that Tourism Committee is not here. I think it would be fair that we waited for him. And so we will bring her.
On a side note, I would make sure that that individual meets the qualifications required to fulfill a tourism.
Have I already did all of that before? I forwarded on.
The, the way that we've done it before, which will probably work regardless of, of the liaison being here, is we can send out the email. All the Aldermen are hearing it here tonight and plus the citizens are hearing it. And just bring names forward with a deadline to get the names to the mayor for the next agenda and we can put it on the next agenda.
Well, it was all sent out. I just thought, since he's not here, I would rather wait till the board liaison is here to be part of it with us. I think that person will be fine to wait two more weeks.
Well, the, the point is, is so that other people that would like to occupy that seat can come forward.
Well, you're announcing it right now. So if anyone else wants to submit their name, please get ahold of Alderman Lush. He would greatly appreciate your phone call.
So I'll send the email out to the board.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll let them know that all, all recommendations and suggestions and then we'll formally put it on the agenda for next week, or for the next meeting.
However you want to do it. And then the second thing I would like to say, thank you, US Silicone Plant. It looks so nice.
That mural is awesome.
Besides everything else they're doing down there, the mural that they put up. And I think they're going to be really good for our community and appreciate everything that they do to help support our community. So thank you to them. If you haven't had a chance, please go by, check it out on Facebook or drive by. It's nice, so.
It's, it turned out much better than I even expected.
At first, we were all guessing it looks nice. So thank you, US Silicone. We appreciate them being in the business in our city. That's it. Thank you.
Alderman Cleave?
Okay, a couple of things. First, follow up with Robert, or Mr. Bergman. Latest on Hawthorne Pond?
Yeah, so it rains, we pump it out. It rains, we pump it out. Actually, I asked him and hopefully we can get it pumped out and hopefully in the next few weeks he can get it finished up for, needs to quit raining.
Well, I understand. But, yeah, at some point, we got to do it. Okay. All right. The other thing that I had was, it's, it's a month away, but the second annual touch of truck and safety fair is coming up on August 16th, starting at 9:00 AM, Liberty Field. It was a really good success last year and I took my granddaughter out there as well. It was really, she really enjoyed messing with fire trucks and seeing a helicopter and all kinds of good stuff.
I enjoy climbing up in the tractor.
Exactly. Exactly. And there's pictures of that, so. And then the final thing, using my time, I wanted to touch on the contingency. I didn't want to bring it up until I saw how the vote went. But I went out and did a lot, a lot of homework on contingency funds and, and I know that we're going to need to look over the next, whatever timeframe, to try to figure out where we can get money from. The big issue I have and have had from the very beginning is that the, we're not funding the parks at all. We're, we're sitting here getting this, the proposition money for parks in stormwater and that's all we're putting in the parks and we're just maintaining parks. And, you know, I've, I've heard, oh, well, if you figure out where money comes from, then we can do it. And, and I get that too. But it's, you know, we, we've got money going to other places for other things and I think we can't stop investing in our parks. And I, I know we're investing in our parks for maintenance stuff, but I mean new things in the parks. So looking out at contingency funds at other cities, they're between 5% and 15% of their annual budget is what's common for contingency. Our annual budget is $11 million. And at 15%, the higher number, we could even go to 20% if we want, but at 15%, that's 1.65 million. Our current balance in contingency is $2.821 million. So if we, we already passed the transfer of the $120,000. If we do the other transfer to, to parks at $234,000, that gives, that still gives us $2.466 million in contingency, which is 800 and almost 17,000 above the 15% mark. So I understand and we put 120,000, we transfer 120,000 into contingency each year, plus we have, I think about the equivalent interest that goes in to contingency every year. So I just want you guys to consider that. I think it's, should we do that every year? Heck, no. I'm not that stupid. You knock your contingency down all the way and you're, you know, you got no, no backup if something bad happens. But I don't think that moving the 234,000 to, to support our parks is a problem. Okay, that was it.
All right.